Okay, at this time I'll call the October 16th, 2014 Dixon County Commission Meeting to order. Would you please stand and join in the pledge salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have one item to add to the agenda, and that is to review and consider the surveying and engineering services from Cobb Valley. And this is on 1380 Quell Road. And so I would move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So all three say aye.
Opposed? Most who carries. We said it in so much unison. Okay, the next time we have the consent agenda, this includes the minutes of October 9th, work session, regular meeting, and also wire payments of $3,695.97.
I may we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Craig, we'll go ahead and start out with you for Commissioner comments and reports.
Yeah, Brad and I at my challenge, we could go Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah, real good turnout. I think there was 42 people there. Thought the meal we had before was good, but it was kinda like going to a family reunion type of deal. Good interaction, I thought. I think come away positive thoughts. Gentleman did ask some questions. Lives in Ottawa County though, but that's, that happens. Brad and I were down at Woodbine later in the week. I think there was about 12 people probably, 10, 12.
I thought it was 13.
We had trouble with the pastor across the table wanting to tell stories all the time, but...
They were good jokes.
Yeah, they were good jokes. Good clean jokes. But good interaction there. Did have a couple of questions when you opened it up for anything about appraisals and stuff like this, but thought we were positive. Brad did an excellent job making the presentation. Good results there. We are going to add Chapman next Monday night, and then Brown's home the 22nd make presentations. That's all.
Yes, it has been a busy week. We started the week off with Monday with our in-service for employees and staff here at the courthouse, and like I say, we've had a very interesting agenda there with participating in an active shooter demonstration here at the courthouse, which was a real eye-opener to us, and we should have had Doug involved in that because the guy walked in our door and shot us before we had a chance to do anything. So Doug, you are the wingman back there. If you see something like that, you just pick up a chair and hit him really hard.
Swing for the fence.
It was an eye-opener to us, just how fast things can go. Tuesday, Martin and I was over at Pope at the senior center there. It wasn't a large crowd, but we had a very good discussion with them, and they were really pleased that we came, and so they understood what they were voting on, and like I said, very positive. Yesterday was the, I was down Junction to the North Central Juvenile Meeting. Things seem to be going good down there now as far as revenue stands. They've been averaging about 25 kids a day down there, which is considerably higher since Sleen County's came in, but it has, as far as the cost per day, it has dramatically decreased our cost per day by having a larger number of juveniles there. And Sleen County also, like I said, with the revenue that's coming in from Sleen County really helps, so that's about all I have.
Okay. I just have a few things. The other evening, they had an open house at the hospital and just to show off a little bit of their facility, but the rehab part of it has moved in upstairs or into the newer part, and they had really quite a turnout there. They invited those that are using some of the services, those that are friends of the hospital, as well as the chamber members, and I think they had something in the newspaper also, so it was well-attended, and it's just a very nice facility up there in the professional level. You know, healthcare is something that everyone certainly looks as one of the important aspects of a healthy community, and there's a, Central Kansas Mental Health is going to have the board meeting, and I plan to attend that next Monday. And then also, if you would take care of sending in my reservation for the MAC breakfast, it's Thursday, Military Affairs Council over at Junction City, and I plan to attend that. They're going to have the superintendent, the new superintendent of schools for Junction City, and includes the Fort Riley schools as the speaker. And we have an invitation to all of us, and if it works out, I'll attend. Wyatt Title, they have sold their business to Security First Title, and they're having a customer appreciation lunch, and that's going to be next Tuesday, October 21st, from 11:30 to 1:30, so all of us on the commissioner invited to attend that if that works, works out. Earlier today, we had a group from Sterling Hall come in, Tim Strunk and some others, and they have some special events that they, such as Pheasant Unlimited, that they have some special events where they would like to have permission where they could have a vendor come in that would actually, along with the meal, have alcohol served, and so they brought that to us, and we had some discussions in regards to that and what other counties are doing, and so we'll have some follow-up on that in the week or two ahead. And I believe that's all I have. Is there anything else that any of you would receive comment-wise? Email or mail or... Doug, would you have anything that you would want to?
No, but thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Okay. We do not have any proclamations today, and so we'll go ahead and move to our county administrator report. Brad, if you'd please go ahead.
Okay, last week you received a letter from the State Farmers Relief Association Secretary, and I got with Paul Fire Chief, District One, and within very short time, he replied back, and they got that taken care of, they had oversight and change in their staffing with their treasurer, and he asked me to express to you his apologies, the state that it wouldn't happen again, and they're active at now, and they've received that report at the state level, so. With the rains that we had over last weekend and on Monday, our guys have been very busy on gravel roads. We received quite a few calls Monday and Tuesday from residents out in the county on a little on both township and county roads, expressing their concern over the shape of the roads, and that's kind of normal and consistent anytime we have rains like that. Of course, we can't do it while it's raining, but our guys did get out where we've been spending this great looking gravel roads and holly gravel to those roads, and those issues that we had that came in on township roads, we contacted the township of that respective location, passed that along to them, so. With the last couple of days, big and nice as they were, I'm sure those conditions have shaped up considerably, so it's kind of normal for this time of the year.
I might mention that in my particular area, we've had 10 inches of rain in the last month.
Wow.
We kind of hit the high amount of rain when it rained south of us and when it rained north of us both in that area, and so that, I mean, that is the size of a rain for a month.
So it'll be about 2016 before even plant wave, or?
I'm hoping by the end of the week. If it doesn't rain again.
Just gives you what's really soaking in. Okay, we talked last week, Craig had asked for some information on the mowers, and the handout you've got a few information sheets that I'll go through real quick. Just a little bit of history, you know, prior to this year, we owned our own mowers. We actually had three tractors and two mowers that we pulled behind those. We had found over the years that essentially they had three mowers to keep two of them running all the time. The original ones that we purchased were belly mowers and hydraulically operated. That was a very poor design at the time, 10 or 15 years ago. About five years ago, we removed the hydraulics and the belly mowers off of them and went to a pull-behind PTO-type mower, which is much more efficient. It takes a lot less horsepower on the tractor, and it doesn't put all the weight on the frame of the tractor, because belly mowers were really, really was tough on. But the sheet you have has some numbers associated with that starting back in 2010. As far as, the first column there at the top shows the parts that we put into, and expenses we put into parts into the mowers in each year. The next is the labor costs, mechanics that we put into the mowers. The next column is the total, total cost of that, of the tractors and the mowers. And then if you add in, and I just took 12 years of expense and averaged $85,000 for the cost of that tractor by today's numbers, if you add that amount in, what it basically had cost us over those past 40 years to run those tractors, it depreciated amount, so. In 2014, we've got that number in the first column of 5949. That typically won't be there, but what we had, we bought those John Deere mowers about four years ago, and when we bought them, the design was a straight axle across the back of the mower. Well, where they're over on the edge and they're curved a lot, that really tore up the wheels and the rims on that. They have since redesigned the mowers, and they come out with a staggered axle on the back that allows them to pivot independently. Rather than sending us back to John Deere and paying for their upgrade, which was more money than us, our guys did that on our own. Ordered the parts, did all of it with ourselves. So that's why you have an extra amount of money there that we typically wouldn't have. Generally, what we would have, what we would anticipate the next few years is simply just a few hours for blade replacement and the cost of the blades that we do three or four times a year. So it would be, I'm guessing, less than $1,000 a year for the parts cost for the mowers themselves, so.
What kind of life expectancy of the mowers then, Brad? 10, 12 years?
I would, I would expect we'd get 10 out of them, you know, that's a rough job.
Oh, yeah.
On these mowers.
You never know what you're gonna hit.
They just, you know, tires go through those things, and fenders off of cars that they don't see, and all kinds of stuff.
Stuff that's been thrown off the road.
Exactly, and they try to stop and pick up the bigger stuff, but you can't always see it when the weeds are four, five feet tall. But, you know, the last mowers lasted that. I would anticipate these ones. We do buy the industrial grade mowers, so if we can get that out of them, we'll be doing good. They've withheld very good now. We've replaced, you know, PTO shafts and new joints, and like I say, the blades, but for the most part, that's what we've done with the exception of modifications, so.
And this is a couple of comments I've had since we were talking about this. The size of the tractors, everything, well, their size, that's John Deere's. They're, all we call is min specification. If they meet, they can exceed them all they want to. Said, what we hear is this tractor they're providing has good resale value, and if they bid just what the minimum was, they wouldn't have the return.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
They actually told us that for next years, they'll probably be a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
Because the market's better for the bigger tractors.
Yeah.
And of course, they want to sell those after we use them for a year, so we get what they give us. If we're getting a Cadillac and all we need is a Volkswagen, we're paying the Volkswagen price, so.
Yeah, and like I said, and people see that, Bill, and don't realize that we're leasing them, and, you know, so.
A gentleman at Woodbine the other day approached us, and he said, "Well, I got a question. Those tractors you bought from Mo and they got three-point hookup. You don't need a three-point hookup." He said, "You know, you're right, we don't, but we lease them, and so we don't dictate that." He said, "Why didn't you realize you did that?"
Yeah, I forgot about him asking that question.
Yeah. So, but anyhow, that's where we are in that. We pay $6,800 apiece for the tractors a year to lease them, with the, and that's good.
Exactly. Minimum 400 hours? Or what's the hours on it, Brad? Do you remember?
It's 500.
500, okay.
We're gonna go over the hours just a little bit, and then you appropriate it out, $17 an hour will be for the extra.
So.
This year with the moisture we've had, and it really gets us going crazy, and we're already over the hours, and we're at the nice point hopefully, so we'll go over it a little bit.
Yeah, I was wondering what the cost was when we, you know, it's kind of like...
$17 an hour.
Yeah, that's not bad.
I put some considerations down here, and on owning, of course, we have to purchase those units. Right now, by today's numbers, the units we're using about $85,000 a unit. If we assume a 12-year lifespan, that's about $14,166 a year for two of them. We would still have to do the routine maintenance, repair parts, tires, everything that comes along with that, and what we've seen, and you can see by the numbers up here, as they age, that increases, because this is hard on them, going right at that angle and the things that they go through. We've had to own three in the past just to keep two running, and that's just the way it's been. Adding the cost of the third tractor, and the breakdowns increase in time, and the mechanics cost is consumed, et cetera. With the leasing, we've got a static amount that we can budget for each year. It stays the same with the exception of that overage on the hours. We have no upfront cost to purchase the machines, of course. We get new machines every year, so we get the luxury of having a brand-new tractor every year, and the amenities and comforts and the reliability of those tractors having new machines, so. All repairs, including oil changes, tires, all the routine maintenance, if there's any issues with them, go back to John Deere. And the real plus is, if we have a problem with one and it's down more than a day, they give us a replacement tractor to use, so we don't have to own that third one. We don't have to deal with those issues. And we have had that issue one time. We had a, oh, a few weeks ago, we had an oil, or the fuel tank on one of the tractors, which there are plastic tank now on the seam split, and cracked, and it was leaking fuel. And they took it in, had to order the fuel tank, but they gave us another tractor to use in the meantime, so. So we don't have, we have zero time consumed for repairs for our mechanics and things of that age. We don't have any risk for breakdowns, like we had, you know, the, one of our new homes that we had last year was in the shop for almost six months, but the transmission's being rebuilt. Transmissions and engine fammers were taking expenses on the tractors, and we have no risk at all, so. And the new machines meet all the emission standards and things that order this down, so. So far, it's been 13 compared to 14. We're less than half of the cost, and that is with the extra $5,900 that we put into the mowers for the modifications. So I would anticipate that in 2015, we'll reduce that by five or 6,000. So we're down to almost a third of what we were paying out in '12 and '13 to have our own machines, so it's certainly, in my opinion, been a very wise move on our part, so. Any questions on that?
I thank Martin and Shiloh for giving that information for us. I think it's good to know that.
Let's see, the 3465 Sage Road, we received notification from KDOT. You've got a copy of the letter. I just put it in your package there. People selected as one of the bridges to receive funding on the new bridge program that they have, the local bridge program, Small Bridges, I think it's called. That will provide us up to $120,000 on that project. At this point, we're estimating it's going to cost us about $132,000 to do that project, so out of our pocket, we'll have about $12,000 of funds that we'll have to commit. We do have that in Martin's budget for this year, and he has been very diligent about monitoring that and managing his budget. I know we've got a meeting next Wednesday, I think, with BG Consultants, Monies, and the committee. Those are all paperwork with us, and we'll get all that filled out and get it back so we can, we can proceed with that project, so, but that's good news. They had 77 of those projects out of the 105 counties that was selected, so.
Is there a chance we will get the second one, or not then?
Well, it's kind of up in the air right now. Out of the 77, I think they used all but about $12,000, or 12... They used the majority of the money. I don't remember the numbers. John and I were talking about it yesterday, and I don't know where there'll be enough money there that they'll go back and look for other projects, or they'll just roll it over into next year's funds and do it again. But I'm pretty confident either way, whether it's next year or a second round this year, we'll be able to put our moving road money into the fracture critical and get it selected, so. They had, I believe it was, was it $10 million, and I think they, out of these 77 projects, they ended up using up about 9.2 million, I want to say.
10.6, it would be.
So I don't know where there's enough money there that they'll do another round of selections, or they may just roll it up into next years, so. But I'm confident we'll get our other bridge in there, and it will be a top priority since the fracture critical, so.
Yeah.
We received word this week on our FLAPP grant application, which is the Federal Lands Access Program. That's the one we put in for around Upland. We were denied on it this year. We didn't get that grant, which, that's all right, because we really didn't have the funding to get it anyhow. But what they did tell us is they see our requirement, and they said, "If you put that in the same grant application next year and ask for the segment closest to the core property, we can pretty much guarantee you'll get it." They want us, instead of starting down by the Gray Road, they want to start next to their property, come the other way.
Work the other way.
Yeah, which is fine.
Yeah.
But they did say, "Keep your application, submit it again on the next round, and we're pretty confident you'll get that," so. And by then, quite honestly, we will know for sure whether or not we've got the money to do it with the sales tax issues, so. So I think that'll work out good as well, so. It was, it was not necessarily good news, but it was kind of good news, so. We reviewed the final press release on a TIF issue earlier, and unless you have any issues with that, we'll go ahead and release that today and give that to the media. It has the changes in it that we talked about last week, so. The grant application for the safe room at Sterling Hall. Where do I start? Let's see. We had a conference call yesterday with KDM at the state level and FEMA at the federal level. We had received a request for information, another one of multiple RFI's, they call them, you know, the federal government or acronyms. This time, they wanted to know if we were willing, as a grant applicant, to provide the necessary elevation to bring that up to the 500-year flood stage or above as required by FEMA specifications. Well, when you compete that based on the numbers we have, that would make, that would force us to raise this structure five to six feet, even take a few inches higher than the base ground elevation out there now, which is not, that's not even possible. I mean, you'd have to have a ladder to get up into. Our frustration was, number one, about that regulation, because it's a tornado shelter, it's not a flood shelter. Number two, as much, if not more relevant, is the fact that if they knew we were going to have to do that, why didn't they tell us that at the beginning of this process until we're all the way through? They had no answer for that, but the bottom line is, there's, we can tell, dusting parts and chances of not recording a conference call with the other agencies. It appears that their regulations, they're of course nationwide, and they have to abide by the regulations that also suit the east and west coast to deal with water issues more prevalent than we do. We asked about the potentials for waivers. There are no provisions for waivers, and all they would say is, "We can refile and ask for a waiver. They can take it up the chain, but chances of getting waivers since they don't exist is pretty insignificant." So at this point, there's, I can tell, having been told that we were good to go, and we were good to go, and it was all but approved, and then they kind of pulled the rug out from under us at the last minute. It doesn't appear it's going to go anywhere, so. It's been very frustrating, so. Saw we had a similar incident, I think I might have briefed you about it. They applied for a safe room at their fire station. Thought it was all good to go. They came back with several RFI's requesting that they put ADA compliant access into an underground, then they wanted backup power into an underground, then they wanted backup power protected in the same way that the people were protected, and it got to where their matching funds, which were going to be 20 or 30,000, was over 200,000, and they, they sort of dealt it well, so. I'm not sure exactly where we go from here other than nowhere, so. Unless something develops differently, I guess that's the best I can tell you at this point.
Well...
We came, we tried, and we got nowhere.
Is there any, any other route that we could take that, that we put pressure on to change our mind?
Well, we talked about getting, trying to get some legislative assistance, you know, pressure, writing letters to our congressmen and senators. I don't know whether that would have any influence on FEMA or not. I honestly don't. We could certainly put together some letters and express some frustration on the thing and see if we get anything back, you know, but I don't know. I just don't know. I'm at a loss on it. We were told several times that it was all but approved. We just had to get the bottom rubber stamp on it, and I know the personnel at the state level were very frustrated as well, so.
With a 500 flood deal, is that even realistic?
I don't think so.
But it just doesn't fit the purpose of what the safe room is for, and it goes back to the tornado issue. And I think our only option is to express our dissatisfaction with the process to our senators, US senators and congressmen, and just kind of let them know what we've encountered with FEMA.
Yeah, our hazard, all hazard plan in Dickinson County has identified overwhelmingly the number one, the number one issue that we face hazard is tornado. And I think everyone would agree with that. You know, we don't have flash floods. We don't have tsunamis. We don't have hurricanes that come up suddenly. And we need tornado shelter, and we needed it at that location, based on the graphics and the use of the building and the pherogram and stuff, and to make an issue, a flood issue, just makes no sense. I mean, so I think Lynn's right. I think our only recourse, and it's a long shot, but that would be it, so. I'd be more glad to prepare some letters for next week when we figure them out. Nothing ventured, nothing gained, I guess, but...
Yeah, I don't know.
Time is worth something. I don't, I have to, I'm gonna say that I don't think it's going to get us anywhere. Even if they put up these chips at the end, and trying, like I said, trying to get a waiver, when they've never made one before, is...
Well, I think it's probably important just to let them know, and I don't know how lengthy the letter has to be, but just to just kind of say, "This is where the mismatch occurs," and let them know and let them put a little pressure on. I mean, they do control their funding.
Well, I would agree with that too, that to send the senators and our congressman a letter that, you know, this was kind of the issue we've had with it, and, you know, frustration that's built over time, you know, it's been going on now for a year and a half.
And the fact that now we're trying to be held to a standard is more, is more directly accountable or reflective to the east or west coast that doesn't necessarily apply here, so.
In the grand scheme of things, a hundred thousand bucks in a month, but every county, that's a lot of good money.
Money we don't have.
Yeah.
I'll put something together for next week for your consideration.
Well, I guess I'm not ready to just give up on it yet.
Okay. Well, like I said, the letters don't cost as much, and may get us some, may get us some results.
Conversation at least.
At this stage in the game, timing it in a year, might be a good time somebody wants to take some action on it. You never know.
And even, even a letter to FEMA stating that, you know, that this is totally unrealistic for what requirements that they're trying to put on this is totally unrealistic to what we...
And not appropriate.
Yeah. And you could state that we are sending letters to our...
Or just hop them in on the letter.
Yeah, the representatives that, you know, that they're... Somehow they're going to have to have a little bit of common sense in... somehow they're going to have to have a little bit of common sense in, in what they're doing.
I don't think that seems to go, go along with it, so. I will prepare those. And of course, we discussed the MOU. I won't go back into details on that. I'll be working with them here next month to come up with a draft on that. See what we work out, so. And then the last thing, what she added to the agenda is the Engineering Services at thirteen eighty Quill Road. That's the bridge that I told you about last week that we've identified has a real bad scour problem underneath, just south of fourteen hundred. And we thought that if we, when we talked, contacted Caw Valley and they agreed if we were to do something now, it would be considerably less expensive if we can get the same company to bid and potentially do the work that's going to be done to work down Trail Road. Since it'll already be in the area, probably save us a considerable amount of money, so.
But that, yeah, that seems a little bit high for me. I'm not sure what their engineering.
Well, that includes, and that's, that's kind of standard, that includes site surveying and the research. Completion of all the DWR and Kansas Department of Wildlife and Port Commit applications and everything. Engineering design and auto cab design of the construction plans, proposed driveway temporary easement legal description exhibit guidelines. Quarantine tabulations and cost estimating, contract documents, bidding assistance and contract administration and the periodic construction inspection, so. That's start to finish on that project, setting it up, designing it, surveying it. And then getting, getting it through the completion phase, so. That's fairly typical of one of those projects. I mean, I, that's about where it runs. We do also have Martin and Janelle look yesterday. Martin does have that money in his bridge funding for this year still. That's why we're doing it now to get it out of the way. And so we still got a little bit of this budget to handle that, so. And that's all I've got.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move to notices and communications. We received various publications. This is a Commercial Carrier Journal and they send us something monthly. I'd already mentioned this earlier, but Security First Title is having a customer appreciation lunch where the commission and those of us from the courthouse are invited. Of course, the title people are down here at the Registered Deeds office quite a bit. But this would be for Ray and Joni Wyatt and Tate Wyatt had Wyatt's title and it has been purchased by Security First Title. And so it's just a change of ownership. We have from the Kansas Historical Society, kind of a bittersweet type thing. This is in regards to the Abilene Presbyterian Church and they're going to be giving consideration to having it removed from the National Register of Historic Places, you know, which is, is the sad news on that reminder of the fire. This also, once it's removed, may enable them to do other things with the property, so. We've received that notification on that building. We also have, this is from KDHE, received notification. And this is in regards to a statement for an annual wastewater permit. And this, the facility, this is at Dixon County, sewer district number three Detroit. And the fee is a hundred and eighty-five dollars and so, and it's directed to Paul Fralik. And so that's something we'll be able to take care of. We have the Kansas County Commissioners Association letter and this is just in regards to the business meeting that will be taking place. This is to the Board of County Commissioners in North Central Kansas from Randall Allen. And so this is in regards to the KAC Conference. Also, I'll just mention this again because it, we do have the KAC Conference and last week, we did receive an invitation from Cook, Flat and Strobel for a dinner at the conference. And since we're at the conference, they would like to take us as well as just about all the other commissioners and, and people that are attending the conference for a meal, but it's, it's October thirtieth is when the RSVP is.
I sent mine in.
You sent yours in? Okay. I'll go ahead and send mine in and then Craig and Brad will let you sort out how you're going to handle that. That's all I have. The only other communication that I had, and I'll just mention this, that they told me confidentially they did not want their name released, but I had an individual say that they're interested in opening a business facility, manufacturing facility in the Abilene area. And they wanted to know what incentives and what help would be available as far as the county and the city as they consider locations and from the state, so. They're going to, you know, make some necessary contacts. And the reason I bring this up though, is it just shows the step that we took to have an economic development group the importance of that because there are groups and individuals that are looking and, and it's just the timeliness sometimes. But also the fact that if, if they are considering our area, you know, it's important to have the data, information for them and just to know what's available. So it's, it's always good news when there's inquiries and hopefully it will develop into something that we'll be able to report at a later date. We do not have resolutions or unfinished business. We will move on to other business. Under other business, we had on the agenda to receive an open plumbing bids for Navarre Handstep Project. And that information is not ready yet and so that needs to be tabled. That'd be next week then.
Next week, yeah, we'll take it right at that.
And I don't think we need to take action to table it. It's just that, just to go ahead and state that. The next item we have is to approve the annual lease purchase contract for a skid steer in the Highway Department. So move.
I'll second it.
We might, might note that's with Bennington State Bank, just for record, so.
Okay, so motion, we have the motion in second for approval of that. And as part of the discussion, you said it is with Bennington State Bank?
We actually leases from Bobcat, but they, their leasing agency is Bennington State Bank. And they had requested they have a formal motion for their auditors put on your minutes so they can get a copy of that, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The last item we have here before adjournment is to review and consider for surveying and engineering services with Caw Valley. And as Brad mentioned, this is in regards to the bridge just south of fourteen hundred. If you have any other comments on that you didn't want to bring up, Brad, or any questions?
That's one that kind of came to our attention upon a citizen report here a couple of months ago. That there was an issue and when we went down to inspect it, that there's a pretty severe scour issue underneath the bridge. We need to address it pretty quickly, so this is kind of the standard services agreement with Caw Valley for eleven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. We would issue to them to get them engaged and get that process going.
And if, anytime we can prolong the lifespan of the bridges as well, as well as make the safety up there where it needs to be, that's.
That's fairly close to where the other one, fairly close to where the other one's going to be, the terminal work on.
And if we can utilize the same mobilization and cut back on our expenses and maybe get a, the same contractor that's going to do trail aid next year one, it kind of makes good sense to say that, that it'd be efficient that way, so.
Okay, is there a motion to go ahead and enter this agreement with Caw Valley for the surveying and engineering services?
So move.
I'll second it.
We have the motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The only thing left would be adjournment.
I saw move.
Second.
We have the motions and the second for adjournment of our meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Usually don't get to do that.